Good evening and welcome to the June 6, 2019, meeting of the Issaquah City Council Land and Shore Committee. My name is Victoria Hunt and I will be Chair of the Committee this evening. I am joined by Councilmember Stacy Goodman and Council President Tolan Martz. This evening, we have three items on the agenda. The first is Polygon Northwest Affordable Housing Development Agreement Amendment. This is a discussion item. Then we have AB 7802, amend 2019 docket of comprehensive plan amendments, two and community facilities redesignation and rezone consideration of Issaquah School District parcel. This is an action item. And lastly, we have initial evaluation of Issaquah's residential zoning and allowed housing types, and this is a discussion item. And presenting information on the first item will be Keith Niven, Economic and Development Services Director.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Good evening, land and shore. So this first item is a discussion item and and I'll set the stage a little bit and then I have a few slides to go through. And then Councilmember Hunt actually forwarded some questions. Thank you this afternoon and I'll try to respond to the questions that you raised and then we can have a conversation. And the applicant, Polygon Northwest, is here and I know they would like an opportunity to say something if the Committee would like to hear from them. So back in 2017, the city entered into a number of agreements with Polygon Northwest. Polygon Northwest was working on constructing what they call their Westridge neighborhood, which is basically west of Ninth Avenue and north of Discovery Drive, a little bit south, but that was already being plotted when we worked on the amendments, which were all going to be north of Discovery Drive up in Issaquah Highlands. And Polygon had purchased 100 transfer development rights from Regal Bank. They were left over from the Park Point project that we worked on and they had asked the city if they could bring those into Issaquah Highlands and include them in their development plans. And as we talked through that, we talked about a certain portion of those units should be affordable and that got fairly complicated from there. It included a conversation about a property that the city owned that was also slated for affordable housing. And at the end of the day, we approved a number of agreements that allowed Polygon Northwest to move forward with their project. And as they've done so, they started developing plans for what they call Block Four, which is an all affordable housing block within Westridge. And there were a couple of things that we noticed where we had some inconsistencies with the development agreement, and I'm going to go through those this evening with you. The first was that the two-bedroom, two-baths, and these are all, just to remind you guys, these are all for sale, affordable housing units. These are not rentals. The two-bedroom, two-bath condominiums were smaller than what was the square footage that was shown in Table One in the development agreement. And there were also to accomplish the requirement for at least one covered parking space per unit, it required them to put some of their carports, which they were proposing, over a stormwater line that is currently encumbering the property. So I'm going to start with parts of the development agreement. This is what's called Table One in the development agreement. It basically listed out, there's 48 total affordable units. There's actually 49 because there's also a group home, but there were 48 two-bedroom and three-bedroom units of which that this allocation shows kind of the AMI, to remind you, is area median income. And the units were going to be basically provided at 60, 80, and 100% AMI. And this table was provided in the development agreement and this number right here, this 1,030 square feet for the two-bedroom, two-baths, this is the issue, this is one of the two issues that we're going to be talking about tonight. The reason why I provided this graphic, this graphic is Attachment Five in the development agreement. And if you look over on the right-hand side, it has unit count and there's a bunch of numbers over here that are really small, but they do represent numbers of which we can look at in a little bit larger scale later. As we, so here you see a site plan of the layout of Block Four. North is actually to the left. This is the western edge of the property and this is West Highlands Park to the west of it. The area in between the two red lines is basically a buried stormwater line. It has been there for quite some time. And as you can see, if they provided covered parking for at least one per unit, some of those carports or garages, and in this case, they're proposing carports, would have to be placed over a portion of the stormwater easement, which has generated some concerns from Public Works Ops. And I was hoping Brett would be here and maybe he'll still get here, don't know. If not, I'll try and answer any questions related to the storm line. So there's really two questions, I think, in front of you guys. One is, are these proposed amendments or requested amendments to the development agreement, are they, do they constitute an important issue for the council? If not, then one option for tonight would be for you guys to direct the administration to go back and prepare an agenda bill with an amended development agreement to potentially reconcile the table with the exhibit. If, on the other hand, and this is the second bullet point in the memo, if on the other hand, the going, changing the table, the number of square feet of the two-bedroom, 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 two-bath units from 1,030 square feet down to 880 constitutes a material change for you guys, then I think the direction that the administration would like to take would be to go back with Polygon and talk about what options there are related to that, if that's truly an issue. So there were a few questions submitted by Councilmember Hunt, as I mentioned. The first question that she asked was, also has the city been in correspondence with Arch about this matter, both carports and square footage? And if so, could the Committee be briefed on that? Absolutely. So we talked to Arch about this when it came up. Arch, you know, so the city is Arch member city. We use Arch as our housing experts as well as our affordable housing. They monitor the affordable housing stock that we have within the city. And what the conversation with Arch really was focused on whether or not it met city code, you know? So Arch isn't crafting policy about the size of these units. The size of these units, whether they're 1030 or whether they're 880 as Polygon is requesting, what Arch uses to evaluate whether that's okay is what's in city code. And that's why I provided the section of city code in the memo for you guys to see that what's in city code for the minimum size of a two-bedroom affordable unit is 800 square feet. And so what Polygon is asking for, which is 880, it clearly is compliant with city code, but I think what the administration believes is this issue isn't really about, does it meet minimum code requirements? Is it, is this a material change from what the council believed they negotiated in 2017? So yes, we talked to Arch. Arch did not see an issue with what was being proposed because it still met code, but I think that's maybe not exactly the question that the administration is asking the Committee to weigh in on as it relates to the square footage. The next question, still on square footage, is, you know, it's, so I can read it. Also, square footage question, do we have any data or information about size of units that are currently available? And I meant to pull up a map and I apologize I did not, and I can if it would be helpful for the Committee. So basically, there are no two-bedroom, two-bath ownership units proximate to this in the city, but there are two-bedroom, two-bath apartments that are close to this property in Issaquah Highlands. One is Discovery West and the other is Issaquah Terrace. And so looking at the floor plans of those developments, which you can get on the web, Issaquah Terrace's smallest two-bedroom, two-bath unit is 880 square feet. The next one, bigger than that, I think, I think is 10, either 1020 or 1030 square feet. Discovery West, the smallest two-bedroom, two-bath that I saw on their webpage was, I believe, 1,020 square feet. They did not have anything less than 1,000 square feet that I could find on their webpage. So I'm not sure, it's not an extensive search. We can, if that's something that the Committee would like the administration to work more on, we could get some more analysis related to that, but I guess what I took away from that is there are some two-bedroom, two-bath units that are that small, but they are clearly the smallest, at the smallest end of the two-bedroom, two-bath spectrum that I could find. Okay? Then the last question is, and here's where I wish Brett was here, and he must have forgot that this meeting was this evening, on the carport amendment, how often do stormwater lines need to be serviced in such a manner that would require actually removing the carports? So that particular storm line has been there for 20 years and has not needed any maintenance. It's really deep. It's, I want to say it's over, I believe it's over 20 feet deep, so getting to it is not easy. My understanding is the only reason we would need to get to that line is if there was a break, and the only reason you would have a break is most likely because of an earthquake or a seismic event that would cause the pipe to basically misalign. So what is, what is the, what is the frequency? Not frequent. I think the concern that the administration had is, and we talked about some different options with Polygon, including having them potentially create a reserve account with the homeowners association that might be able to be earmarked for replacing the carports if the city ever needed to get in there. But because that could be another 20 years from now, you know, I think the concern that Public Works Ops had was that, you know, that either, even if, even if the Block Four HOA paid for the replacement of the carports, the city would still be seen as being kind of the bad guys because we caused that fiscal impact to that neighborhood. So I think in talking about it, the administration basically didn't like the removal of the carports. We actually tried really hard to fit them in and not have them over the storm easement, but at the end of the day, I think we would like the flexibility to provide as many covered parking spaces but not encumber the storm easement. So stop talking at this point. Do you have questions?
Do we have any questions for Keith? Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. So Keith, I'm still a little bit confused about why we're even having this conversation. As I look at the signed agreement, it doesn't seem very complicated to me and it also seems very, very clear.
Yes.
It says that at least one carport for each affordable unit will be provided.
Yes.
And it says the design of the affordable units will generally be consistent with Attachment Five, the design, and for, and the for sale affordable units will have minimum square footages as shown in Table One.
Yes.
So why are we, why are we, why are we being addressed and presented something called a material change when it's clearly, without any conversation, two material changes? And the city provided upwards of $2 million value in Parcel D and we're being asked to make two significant changes to a not complicated agreement, and I don't understand why.
So that's a super great question. So I agree with the council members' reading of the agreement. I think it's clear too, the way that it reads. I think that within the bullet point under C, it's clear that it says that the size of the unit will be consistent with Table One and it will be-
It doesn't say consistent with.
I don't-
It says, "will have minimum square footages."
Okay. That's what, I don't have it in front of me. So, so yes, so basically, if you, if you, if you felt like there was some ambiguity between Attachment Five and Table One, it seemed like that language in the agreement clarifies that the number in the table trumps. That's the way I read it too. I think why we're here is we are, we're wanting to get the council's perspective on these two issues. I think Polygon believes that the 1030 was a error on their part and should not have been in the table. I think they're going to hopefully help you understand why that makes sense for them and why they think that this is a Scrivener's error that should be, that the council should agree with changing. I think what's in the agreement now doesn't lend itself necessarily to that outcome. And so that is, that's why we're here for that issue and the fact that they have already designed the building with the 880 because that's what they thought was agreed to. Carports, I think, we're here because, because of, it seemed like if, if Polygon had not moved forward with a request to consider a change to the development agreement for the square footage, we, the administration would not have brought forward the carport conversation at this point. I think at this point, the carport issue is solely an issue of, I think, aesthetics and fit of this particular project because most of the housing in Issaquah Highlands has covered parking, which is why we put that requirement on in the first place. But because Public Works Ops did not want to be, I think, responsible for that carport replacement in the future, they had asked if we would bring this forward at the same time as the other requested amendment to see how strongly the council might feel about that proposal. So, so I think it was, it is the tag along item for the other one. If ultimately, the council believes that the square footage should stay at 1030 and are not interested in changing the requirement for the covered parking, then the administration isn't going to push that one, I don't believe. So-
So when you mean, so the covered parking, so I want to back up a little bit. So are you saying that had the square footage issue not come forward-
Yes.
-then the covered parking would have, there would have been required one covered parking space for each affordable unit-
Yep.
-and would it have gone over the-
It has to. It can't, it can't, it, if we could have gotten it to fit outside of the easement, it wouldn't have been included here. And so ultimately, what DSD staff is working with Polygon and PWO on is if it, if there has to be some carports over the storm easement, how can we do that in a way that puts the city at as small of future financial risk as possible?
So it's, so are you saying that the city administration, so I thought the city administration was not in favor of revising the carport number? Did I read it wrong?
It's, it's a little bit, it's a little bit more ambiguous than that, or vague than that. So what I will tell you is the administration is, is a little bit split on this issue. I think there are reasons why not putting the carports there makes sense for certain parts of the administration. I think others, and this depends on, you know, I think whether or not, one, you think the HOA for this neighborhood is going to be responsible, whether or not they can accommodate a replacement if that needs to happen, and two, whether, you know, whether or not the city's even ever going to need to get into this storm line. I mean, there's a lot, there's a few variables here that-
It seems like there's a triple split view here, just say.
Yes.
That seems a little awkward.
It is a little awkward.
Okay.
I feel a little awkward about it.
And I don't have a question.
Okay.
I'll have comments.
Okay.
One follow-up question. On, on the administration's position on covered carports in our memo, the last sentence says, "removal of covered parking spaces in this building only will not provide equivalent treatment of parking as adjacent market rate buildings." And so I was just, that sentence to me is confusing, but I think it means that it, that this change will make it stand out in the neighborhood.
So one thing, I'm going to go back to the two council members that I think were on land and shore when we negotiated all of these agreements. There was a lot of conversation about, actually, Tolan, I don't think you were here, my apologies, it was Paul. So there was a lot of conversation about fit and about how the city and Port Blakely worked really hard to spread out the affordable housing in Issaquah Highlands so there wouldn't be this feeling of, oh, that neighborhood's where all the affordable housing is. And I think most of the residents in Issaquah Highlands would probably have a really tough time pointing to all the affordable housing because it's so well dispersed. And so as we talked about that and as we talked about the agreements with Polygon, there was definitely a pretty significant thread about wanting to make sure, because we did talk about, could they disperse these 49 affordable housing units in multiple blocks in Westridge? And, you know, at the end of the day, there, there's 10 in a different block, but this, this whole block here, everything that you see in front of you, so these are affordable housing and then this is the group home here at the corner. So, so part of the concern was that this, if this wasn't done right, that it could be, you know, it could not fit in with the rest of the neighborhood around it. And Polygon at the time, who is building basically north and west of here, you know, gave the city a lot of assurances that this was going to fit in. And we did include the piece about the carports to make sure that it wasn't just a big surface parking lot back behind these units, that there would at least be structures and some of the cars would be tucked under the structures and that would be a better visual for the adjacent neighbors of West Highlands Park. So, so that was definitely a, a part of the conversation that we had going through committee and led ultimately to the approval of the documents, I believe. But how significant is that for the council? You know, this is, this is where the administration can remind the Committee of the conversations we had, but I think at the end of the day, and why this is a discussion item only, is to get some feedback from you guys to say, okay, do we need to work harder on this or is this something that's not worth bringing forward as a future agenda bill? So-
Okay, thank you. If we don't have any more questions, all right, I, at this time, I will welcome any comments from the public that would like to make comments. And if you could, please make your comments from the microphone and introduce yourself and if you care to, your relationship to the city.
Anybody can go.
Good evening. It's good to see you, some of you, and meet some of you for the first time. My name is Nick Abdalnor with Polygon Northwest. Had the opportunity to work with staff and Arch several years ago through this process. I think first and foremost, it was and has and is a current, still a pleasure to work with staff and Arch. We work with them on a daily, weekly basis. Everything that you have seen to date and staff has seen is a result of that. I'll take the low-hanging fruit first. I did bring our manager of entitlements, I did bring our director of architecture and planning, who is also part of this, should you want to go down how we got here. But to keep it at a high level, Polygon is still wanting and has desired to keep the number of carports one for every unit, just so we're clear. We don't want to deviate from that. It was discovered as any project, when you get into utilities and civil engineering and grading and depths, that there was a storm line discovered down there that has been existing for quite a while. So, so I just want to make it clear, we do want to provide every unit a covered parking spot. How we get there though is changed and the location of them, and so we did offer to staff alternatives that we believe would be successful financially, limiting exposure to the city. So I think that's something that staff and we can work with, but the number of units should be there. We don't, we don't want to change that. The option though is being presented, if that's something you guys want to entertain. I couldn't agree with you more, Stacy. The agreement is very black and white. We spent months working on this personally, my director of architecture and planning with Arch, staff, administration, and I think we did a great job. I think that has merit, the AMI, the unit counts, the locations. We spent a lot of time making sure architecturally it would fit in, not only on Block Four but also on MF North, because we've sprinkled them in through townhomes that will look and feel exactly like market rate. The end result is this is an error. I don't have it available, maybe you do on your computer, the actual exhibit that is clear to read on exhibit-
The one that we submitted.
They're part of the packet?
So all of the, all the PDFs are there from Sunshine, so-
It's not my, it was one's the one that is in your memo, one from-
One, the previous memo.
Yeah. So there's several memos. But at the end of the day, we, we went through discussions on how many one, two, three embed counts. Long story short, we had original one, two, three beds and it morphed into, we would like all two and three bedrooms. My director knows more than that about how we got there, but long story short, the architectural details, is it available or not?
It's-
That's right here. This is important, I think, for everyone because while PDFs open sometimes and not, okay, well, this is smooth.
There it is. It's just too, my hands are a little slow.
Give it a second if you would. This exhibit is part of Exhibit Five of the development agreement and, and I think it's really great that we have it. It's still great that we do have it because architecturally it committed us to building market rate style housing. Unfortunately, in the agreement, you can't read the intent of the unit counts or the two-bed, two-baths or the square footage. And so there is a disconnect, long story short, between what was designed and approved and what's fit on the site plans and all of our exhibits to what correlated to the table. That is it in its simplest form. We apologize for the error. We discovered it by staff's result of looking at our actual building plans. So that is what we're asking for, is a correction, which we believe is a Scrivener error, nothing more, and that is it. So we're happy to answer any questions that you have to discuss it further because I know there's somebody who wasn't, not part of the process, which was lengthy, and also any questions that could be answered by our architecture and how- any questions that could be answered by our architecture, and how we got from 1, 2, 3s to 2 3s and the square footage difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time?
Richard Rawlings with Polygon Northwest as well. And so I just wanted to, this is the, part of the development agreement, and I don't think it's been quite clearly said, this says 880 square feet, and it has the unit, the C-type unit in the middle, that is 880 square feet, that we've submitted for building permits. So while the table says 1,030, the attachment, that we all agreed, this is the architecture, this is the floor plan, that number right there is 880 square feet. So that's where, that's the disconnect. And any other questions you might have for us, obviously?
Is there anybody else from the, the public, members of the public that would like to speak? And then if it.
Sunshine Cappas, I'm the entitlement manager for Polygon, and I just want to point out the number of phone calls and inquiries that we get, wondering when this project is coming to fruition. So, you know, it's a great floor plan, we didn't deviate from what we originally submitted on the layout. There is a Scribner error in the table, you know, discussion changes, we're going through 1, 2, 3 bedroom, excuse me, 1, 2, 3 bedroom units, different people could be, I wasn't there at the time, so different people were helping update the documents. But at the end of the day, this is the product that we presented, and that we discussed, and that we were planning to build, and this is exactly what we submitted with our building plans in January. And this is the product that the community is desperate for, based on the phone calls that we're receiving and the public attention. So if you could, you know, support our proposal in making the modification to the chart, so we can move forward with the building permitting and bringing this to the market, we would really appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay.
My name is Rowan Hines, I live at 1571 Sycamore Drive here in Issaquah. I really didn't come down for this, I didn't intend to comment, but now you give me the opportunity, it may not, I recognize it may not be the appropriate venue for this, but I am disappointed just in the overall appearance in the buildings, that, to my mind, the larger buildings should be designed as such to look like smaller buildings. And to my mind, the perfect example that we have here in town is the Village Theater. And I would encourage you to look, I realize that may be a little bit more expensive, whatever, but it provides a much more individual appearance, and I think it's much more accommodating to people, they're much more, that live there, it's their place, rather than just one of many units in a big building like that. And, and I would encourage you to, to think about that anyway, and how you design it. Recognize, not appropriate, but at this point, but you asked me, so here's my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I think that, that concludes public comment, and so now, this is a discussion item, so we will move into deliberations. Would anybody like to start it, start off the conversation? So President Martz.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm with going first. I do not consider the, I mean, I do consider this a material change, I do not consider it a Scribner's error. I was, I'll let me back up a step. If you look at rental properties, 2-bedroom properties in Issaquah right now in Zillow, and you say 1,000 square feet is a breaking point, there's 189 units that are more than 1,000 square feet, there's 22 that are less. If you look at properties for purchase, there's 41 units available for sale above 1,000 square feet, 5 that are not. I have to say, I, this was a tough decision when we made it at the time, because we, as a city, are feeling the pinch of so much residential without corresponding services and jobs, but I was proud of the 4 to 2 vote of supporting this decision. And I have to say, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throttle back my comment and just say disappointed that the developer has come to us today just asking for relief without any commensurate discussion. We reached a certain point in our conversation, and we had a package that not, not all of us, but, you know, a majority felt was a benefit to the community, and coming back and just asking for relief without offering anything commensurate is extremely disappointing. And I went back and I watched the video, and it, and it said what I knew, which is that we never, there was never any talk about having smaller units, and I know that because I would have been dead set against it. I think that it is, again, I'm gonna throttle back my words and just say disappointing. I, I'll say, I, I lived, I was poor growing up, and the thought of living in different, lesser housing is just, no, oh, no. That's my comments.
I agree, I'm not interested in, in pursuing the amendment as far as what would be required for making the housing units smaller. I agree with the administration's position that, that this, these details were important to council when council had those discussions, and I agree also with Councilmember Goodman that it reads very clearly that those are the unit sizes that were agreed upon. And then also to the carport issue, likewise, I, I would not be in favor of exploring that. Further, I think that one of the development agreement, one of the development agreement primary objectives is to ensure that these units fit into the surrounding market rate units, and one of the things that will make that very clear is if they, from the street, look very different, and it sounds like this would do that. So I'm also not interested in, in making that change.
I agree with all those comments. I would add that in terms of the memo and the comments we heard tonight during the presentation, what Arch, that whatever opinion Arch has of this desired change, and whatever the code is, is completely irrelevant. We have a contract, and we contracted around the code. This is not a Scribner's error. A Scribner's error is a legal term of art, and it means that it's a type, a typo, and it means that both parties agree that it's a typo, do not agree that it's a typo. I don't know what happened, I, I can think of some things that might have caused it. I'm not interested in knowing, because I don't, I'm not going to sit here and negotiate this tonight. And I also think that this is not a well-told story, and I would hope that the next time something like this comes forward, whether it's this or something else, that we would have a better story to tell our community. So I'm too disappointed.
Thank you very much for your comments. We will see where this goes from here. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we will move to the second item on the agenda, and that is AB 7802, amend 2019 Docket of Comprehensive Plan Amendments to Add Community Facilities Redesignation and Rezone Consideration of Issaquah School District Parcel. And this is the action item this evening, and it will be presented by Trish Hanenin, Policy Planning Manager.
I also received some additional comments on this one that I'll be happy to address when we get through. This has never happened before in all my years at Issaquah, that we've adopted the docket, which is a list of comprehensive plan amendments that the city proposes to do throughout the year. It's a requirement by the state GMA that communities have a docket or a list that they adopt in some way early in the year, so that other items don't show up at the end of the year for consideration and weren't considered through the whole process. Right after you all adopted the docket, the school district approached us with good news that the litigation on one of their sites they were looking at was almost over, and could they add that to the docket? We call, I called the state and said, this has never happened before, can you add something to the docket early on before you've started work on anything? And they said, yes, for two reasons, for a couple of reasons. One, that we had not started to work on any of the pieces, we'd not brought any of the pieces of the proposed amendments forward, and also that we were following the process of docketing, and so we were okay to add something if we chose to, but that it had to be added in the same way that you all approved the original docket. So, so legally, it's okay to do this, you don't, you don't have to do this, but legally, you, you are allowed to do this. And so the amendment is, or the adjustment is this, it's number four, excuse me, of the, the docket, which is just, again, a list, where we, we, we ask all the departments, we talk to the county and the, and say, do you have any properties that have turned over in the year that now you don't want them zoned residential or commercial, that you would like them zoned community facilities, so you're able to do community facilities types of projects on them? And at first, we had six of them, and they're listed, and we would only be adding the one more, the Providence Heights School Site, and for those that might not be familiar with that, it's up in Providence, in sort of in the middle of Providence Point, 28.86 acres, currently zoned, single-family, small lot. The school district does not own it now, they are working through that, and we have Steve Crawford here tonight to answer any questions you have in that process, because I, I'm not privy to that process, but he is, so he'll be able to share that with you if you would like to know that. If, if they weren't able to finalize the purchase, and you chose to put it on the docket and rezone it to community facilities, it could not take place until they owned it, so it would be conditional, because obviously, if it's not owned by the school, we couldn't make it community facilities. That's pretty much short and sweet. Councilmember Hunt asked some questions about the items on the docket. They're just, they're generally listed because we haven't actually worked through with the Parks Department, Public Works, what actually they would like them to be zoned, because, for example, Burisma, they're not completely sure, all the uses, you know, they know part of it would be open space, perhaps part of it might be a little tiny picnic area, perhaps, you know, they're still sort of in the process, so we just wanted the, the name, the property on there. When it was on there, we didn't own it yet, same with the Talis site, the school didn't own it yet. When we put it on the list, we just hoped that by the time we were done with the comp plan amendments, that they would own it, and so they would be ahead in the process, and they would be able to move forward. Are there questions on the docketing?
Okay. Councilmember Goodman.
Oh, I didn't mean to go first. I had to handle that first.
Okay. So, so my questions were about how, how exact the wording on the docket needs to be, because it says, for example, that these are acquired by public entities for public purpose, and my understanding is that this has not been acquired yet, it's not owned currently by the school.
Correct.
So does, does that need to be addressed in this, in this docket, or is that?
And that's why in the bottom, we have that caveat, some may end up as placeholders, because when we actually drafted the docket, and you all approved the docket, three of the parcels weren't in the correct ownership yet. But we knew if we waited for the correct ownership, it would be a year again before we could come up for potential rezon and redesignation to community facilities. For example, taking this site, for example, it's zoned, single-family, small lot, I believe, a high school isn't allowed in that zone, and so they would have to wait till the rezoning next year, if, if we weren't allowed to put it on for consideration this year. That would take them back another bit of time before they would be able to start site planning and permitting and that kind of thing for that.
Okay, so the point of that, in parentheses, some of these may end up as placeholders, is to explain that they may or may not be acquired and may or may not be rezoned.
Or completed at the end of the year, correct?
Okay. And that wording has been on the docket previously, because it hasn't, it hasn't changed.
Yeah, it's sort of the hedging on if we can't, if you can't take ownership, or you can't do whatever it is that you need to do to, to allow it to change zones.
Okay, and then also, so no other changes have been made, so I, I just wonder about that, because I noticed that, for example, in the memo, it says, East Lake Semamish Parkway Site, Open Space slash Park, and then in the actual comprehensive plan docket, it has opens, it has for East Lake Semamish Parkway, it says, Open Space, question mark?
Right.
So I just wondered how exact we have to be when we're, when we're specifying what the rezones are going to be in this table.
Right, and again, the docket is just a list, it's a placeholder, because we hadn't figured out, the agenda bill was written a lot sooner, a lot more recently than the docket. The list is just a list to capture the ones we want to talk about in the future, and like, for example, since we've taken Burisma, we have met with the Parks Department to try to figure out how the zoning would look, and which parcels, and how, but when we first wrote the list, we didn't even own it yet. We were hopeful, but we didn't own it yet, so, so again, the list is just a placeholder that says, we might not even get them all owned and, and rezoned, but the agenda bill had more up-to-date data, because we've actually taken over some of them and have started sort of figuring out what they should be.
Okay, and last question, the current zoning and current ownership of this that we're adding is what exactly?
Of the, the current, well, we're not, we're not talking at all about what the future zone would be, although it's, it's probably safe to say that if it turns into the school property, they'd want it to be community facilities, facilities. Currently, it is not owned by them unless Steve has a epiphany to share with us tonight, which wouldn't be a bad thing, but it would be, it would move from the single-family small lot to community facilities, facilities. On the, if you all would approve that at the time that they took ownership, you know, if, if they take ownership in October, then when you adopt the comp plan amendments, assuming that you go for that, then it would take effect when the comp plan was adopted.
Okay. Thank you. Let's, so Member Goodman?
Thank you. Questions I have are just a little bit about process. So I see in the, in your memo that you went to the state and asked them about when it's appropriate to add something to the docket that's already been approved?
Mm-hmm.
And so I wondered, what's our, do we have some local code that talks about our own?
Our own docket, yes.
And our own process?
Which is one of the reasons they said it was okay to, to add something, is because we have our own code, and we've followed our own code on creating a docket, adopting a docket, following up with, if you don't approve some of the amendments on the docket, that you allow, you put it in your ordinance, why you didn't process one of them, or what have you.
I just wondered why we, it was, it was just kind of struck me that we just kind of completely skipped our own code, and it looked like we just called the state to see what was okay, so I wondered why we didn't have our own code in here.
Well, no, we do have a code, we've, we didn't have a code to add something after the docket was already approved, and so I just.
I would have liked to see more about that, because I didn't, I don't even know how our code addresses it, or doesn't address it, so we kind of just, so my, so my, my curiousness when I, when I read it was why we just called the state, and so it would have been nice to see something in here about why we, about why we just called the state. If we would have explained that, that would, that would have been helpful.
Okay.
And then the second question I have is, should we be going back to PPC with this or not?
That was a question that we asked our own attorney, and he believed that since it's just a list, and it's not changing, it's not actually making the decision, if you were to actually make the decision tonight, that would be wrong, but to add something to the list before we've started working on anything in the list, he said he didn't believe that that was a change enough to go back to PPC.
Okay. I thought we had something earlier this year, or last year, where, I think it was earlier this year, where we wanted to add something to a docket, and it was considered a substantive change enough that we went back to PPC and they weighed in again. Do you recall that? I vaguely recall that.
Well, I know you've sent plans back to them that substant, like the Old Town Subarea Plan, that changed dramatically since when you had it, and you sent it back to them to look at it again. So there's things like that that are actual projects and products that you've sent back to them that have sustan, that have sustan.
I thought it was something about a docket.
I think, I think maybe the difference here, Stacy, and I'm talking out of turn, so Trish, if I'm off-base, let me know. But, so this is, this, if, you know, assuming you guys approve this, then this still goes back to PPC as part of the docket that then ultimately gets recommended for council approval at the end of the year.
Yeah, I get that.
Yeah.
But I thought we, anyway, and maybe I'm thinking we did something, am I, okay. Nikki recalls what I'm talking about.
Well, so I remember that conversation, and I had actually asked in previous conversation about if it had to go to PPC, and we had this, so we had this conversation that it doesn't. And this, we did have this conversation previously with an item in February, and at that time, the city attorney confirmed that additions to the docket do not need an additional public hearing by PPC.
Okay.
So it's, it's consistent with that previous discussion that we had.
Are there questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this item?
Steve Crawford, Executive Director of Capital Projects for the Isaguas School District. This is an item that we would like to have on the list, so that when we do acquire the property, which we fully intend to do and expect to do in the next few weeks, that we would be able to move forward with the planning process for the proposed schools, rather than having to wait for, or potentially wait for a rezon that would allow high school on the parcels.
Thank you.
Be happy to answer any questions.
So this, I believe, is the action item for this evening. And so, I can go ahead and make the motion, then we can deliberate on the motion. So I move to amend the 2019 Docket of Comprehensive Plan Amendments to include consideration of community facilities redesignation and rezon for the Providence Heights property at 228th Avenue Southeast, being acquired by the Isaguas School District as requested, and to recommend that to the full council. And I'll start discussion. I am in favor, I think this, I think this makes sense to add this to our comprehensive plan docket, and to go forward with discussions about this potential rezon, and I think this is one step in that process. Council President Mertz?
Yeah, I mean, the community has shown a strong interest in this property. We've heard a lot from the community. I'm sure we'll hear a lot more from the community on this issue, as you, I think it's important to point out what you pointed out, which is, this is just one step. But yeah, let's get the conversation going and see where it goes first to PPC and then back with council.
Yeah, I agree. And the reason I was asking the questions about process was not to slow it down, just to make sure that we are following a process, because I wouldn't want to slow down, try to slow down what the, you know, district is trying to accomplish. I know land is a critical issue for the district in getting schools up, and I'm completely comfortable with adding this and agreeing, first step.
So all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, so that passes, and I think it, I think it can be consent because of its nature, so.
We'll have plenty of public discussion on it for the rest of the year.
Yes. Okay, great. And then with that, we will move to the third item, and third and final item on our agenda this evening, and that is initial evaluation of Isaguas residential zoning and allowed housing types. And this is a discussion item, and will be presented by Trish Hanen also.
This is another one that I received, some additional questions this afternoon, and I'll address those after. You had a busy afternoon. I will try and answer those after. This came from, this originally came from the agenda bill that was the single-family, small lot, I'm sorry, single-family suburban prohibiting duplexes and cluster in the SF S zone. And so, it moved from your questions, caused us to ask more questions of ourselves, and it grew into a bigger conversation than just duplexes and SFS. So, this is that discussion that we're presenting. This is one of those great maps that shows that, from what we figured out, sort of the back of the napkin with all the data that we have ahead of us now, without doing the buildable lands yet, there's about 10,000, and some changed new units that are going in Central, that can be accommodated in Central, that we plan to have go in Central. And sort of checking out everything around Central, there's about, give or take, there's about 500 units that can go in, based on capacity, the zoning, the types of housing that can go in. And what we would like to propose, or we'd like to bring to your attention, is that before we did Central, we tried to, we had zoning in place, and still do, in all the rest of the city, that allowed different incentives, it allowed, it had tools that applicants, developers, property owners could maximize the amount of residential units they could have on their property. And so, when we finished with Central, we never went back and tweaked all those to not allow those kinds of incentives and those kinds of tools that would allow you to maximize your property. And so, what this discussion is, is do we want to go back and fix that? Do we want to go back and make the rest of the code show where the priority of housing units should go, and that would be in Central? And so, that's what this discussion is supposed to be, way beyond just duplexes and SFS. And to, just, I know there was a lot of confusion about cluster and how cluster works. And so, going back for just a moment to the single-family suburban, we thought we'd show you a typical two-acre lot, because remember, it takes two acres to actually trigger the allowance of using cluster. If you chose not to use the cluster provision to the far side, you get nine units on nine lots, and those all have to be at least the minimum lot size. If you choose to do cluster, because you have two acres, you can, you have to do, the code says you have to do 15% common area, which is not defined. So it can be grass, it could be a basketball court, it could be something. It was never defined. But you could get your nine units with four duplexes in your single-family home. That's the center one. We weren't sure how to draw in the 15%, because it's, just imagine that it's there. The third version is if you do cluster development with your two acres with critical areas. You still get nine units, but the cluster provision allows you to have smaller lot sizes. You can go smaller than the minimum lot size because you've got critical areas there. So you can still get your nine acres, nine units, you can still get all your duplexes. You still have to get your 15% common area, and your critical areas are required to be in a protected tract. So that's sort of how the three scenarios look. Hopefully, that is, it's, a picture is worth a thousand words, so I blame, we got 3,000 words up there.
So, so the big thing, I think, to kind of, the exclamation point for this is, so on the third version, where you have property that's encumbered by critical areas, the only way you get to nine is through the clustered approach. And so, where the first two assumes there's no limitations on the property, there's really not that much difference between the first two. But when you get to the third one, if there was not a clustered approach allowed, you know, you would get much less than nine units, so.
And one of the questions that Councilmember Hunt asked is, do you still have to protect your critical areas if there's not a cluster provision used? And my answer was yes. Title 18 dot 10 has the critical area regulations that apply always, everywhere, regardless of if you use the cluster provision or not. So those aren't, those aren't changed or lessened by using cluster or not using cluster. They're always the same. Are there any other questions with, with this part of it? So your options, and we can talk about it some more, this doesn't have to be a decision tonight, but we just sort of wanted to plant the seed of, with our questions and our options, is we could move forward and start modifying the code, going back and tweaking all the other zoning areas that are outside Central, to make them more realistic, to show the priority of, we want the housing development to go in Central and not in extra development in the other areas outside Central. We could decide to do that at a different time, that maybe 500 units isn't enough to make anybody worried. I think if you, and we could just do that at a different time, or not to modify it at all. But some of the pieces that are in your memo, that because we never, we never changed the code, it just looks like that developers can still maximize those areas outside Central. And that's not the, that's not the vision that we worked so hard to create with Central and the investments that we made to make Central, you know, we did the planned action ordinance, we put so much investment to get the development to go in Central. The other piece, the second one, from a neighborhood standpoint, a lot of the neighborhoods don't understand what the zoning means exactly. They might think that single-family suburban would never allow for duplexes, it would never allow anything but a detached unit. And so, the thought that the existing neighborhoods would have different types of land uses going in next, you know, a triplex or a duplex or what have you, you know, might be devastating to a neighbor. So we want to try to, if there's a way that we can fix that by making it all as transparent as possible what a neighborhood is zoned and what could go in there. That's what the second policy consideration is. And the last one is, just using single-family suburban again, is the first object, is the actual purpose and intent, it says, "Establish and preserve residential neighborhoods for detached single-family units free from other uses, except those which are compatible with." And we've heard from some that duplexes aren't compatible. You know, that's still a choice that you all get to make, but we wanted to share that with you as one of the policy considerations, to choose to move forward or to not move forward. Are there questions? Depending on what you all want to do, I didn't really know what the, how much next steps there really are.
Council President Mertz?
So, we're talking about Sycamore. I'm still a little unclear if there are other opportunities outside the central area or the valley floor that some, that we're, that we might potentially address in this. Is this really, is it really only Sycamore that's?
No. I think we sent you, the attachment to the memo had the duplexes that you'd asked about. I have so many numbers tonight, I don't want to.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm looking at a map, and it's got potential maximum number of duplexes in SFS zone by sub-area.
Right.
And it shows a number of others, but are those all outside, I guess there's no SFS in the central area.
Correct. So this is still, the map is still, because we wanted to respect what you all had asked for before we decided to try to table just that, the narrowly focused code amendment. But, but we still wanted to give you the answers to your questions, so.
Got it.
And again, that's not the only zone that has that sort of anomaly, that you can have more sorts of residential types than what the neighborhood probably assumes you can have, so.
Got it. So that on Squawk, that's 78.
78.
78, that are two, basically two-acre parcels or bigger.
Correct.
Okay.
And then, does that, 78, that includes potential joining of parcels, is that right?
Um, I think this is the first.
That was part of the discussion, was that you might be able to join parcels, and then you would have a two-acre parcel, and that's.
You can see, you can get it from the agenda, Trish, if you wanted.
I can't see that. How do you?
So remind me, and I might have missed that meeting, how does, what's the provision for the two-acre criteria?
Yeah, the first tab, second tab, there you go.
An option is to buy two parcels and merge them together and create a parcel.
This is just the memo. Where did they, where's the?
Couldn't you just take, I mean, couldn't somebody just take four half-acre parcels and put them together?
Probably.
Okay. So there's, there probably, but then there'd probably be lots and lots, I mean, wouldn't it be more than 78?
Yeah, so this was, this was part of why I'm asking this question, is because I think part of the discussion and part of the change from the presentation of the information this time since last meeting, is that depending on the combinations of parcels, you could have this cluster provision in many more cases than what currently the parcels are configured. And so, I think part of that, sort of, so part of what I was really interested in discussing in this meeting and understanding is the scope of the change, because my understanding from the last meeting was that it was really only a handful of parcels. And now, I think when we're looking at it maybe more citywide and more, what are all the possibilities there, it's, there's potential for many more cases where this could be applicable.
Right. Because this one, there's only seven that could do it standalone, but if you combine them, and you don't know if that would ever happen, then you would have 18. That are possible, sorry, to be combined.
And at the last meeting, we were only talking about standalone parcels, and had not looked yet at parcels that could be combined. And yes, the 110 does include the, all 25.
Council President Mertz?
I'm surprised that there's only 18. Couldn't you just take any four half-acre parcels? Like Squawk has tons of half-acre parcels, right? Just take four of them and put them together.
You could, but we were only looking at parcels that are currently vacant, because I don't know when somebody's going to sell a house and tear it down. So we just looked at vacant parcels, existing.
Oh, I, yeah, I mean, okay. I mean, I could totally imagine, you know, on my street, right, if you've got a $700,000 house for sale, right, on one acre, and another house next to it that's $700,000 for an acre, buy the adjacent house and put up nine houses, nine, you know, units for sale? Oh, yeah.
I can see that, too. But I didn't, I didn't want to assume, so. But yes, that, that could absolutely happen.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay. So I think with that, we will take any public comment from members of the audience that would like to comment on this item. So if you could, please, if you could please make your way to the microphone and introduce yourself. Thank you.
Rowan Hines, I live at 1571 Sycamore, here in Isaguas. And I think this whole thing started because of the Sycamore sewer question. And in talking with Mayor Polly, it became obvious through some of those discussions that, that the zoning allowed for some things that was not well-understood by the, you go back to the, where you had the three bullets, I would suggest in the second bullet, in the second line, you had an S, because maybe it's, the residents are not exiting, they're existing residents. Minor. But, anyway. And so, that's where, I think, where the whole thing started. And I recognize there's probably a minimum number of parcels, that's noted throughout the city for this. But if we look at a neighborhood like Sycamore, for example, unfortunately, the conditions, covenants, and restrictions are probably not what they used to be. But there are some that are still followed, and the lots are probably larger, they're not close to two acres. We have, might be one or two lots there that could be aggregated for. We have, might be one or two lots there that could be aggregated for two acres. But to my concern, if you look at the way the existing zoning is, if you think about it with the additional housing and stuff, it's really, to me, it's two questions. One is changing the neighborhood by adding that density of those houses. And two, in a place like Sycamore, it's basically a one-mile cul-de-sac with 80 houses on it. There are no curbs, no gutters, no sidewalks, no streetlights. And so you start adding anything that would change the suburban nature of that neighborhood, to me, it's a major shift. And I would suggest, if you want to consider this throughout the citywide, that you consider whether it's the neighborhoods are cul-de-sacs or whether they have through streets. And make some determinations there if you want. But to my mind, I'm very comfortable with leaving the duplexes and the cluster housing down into the Central area and leave all of the existing neighborhoods outside the Central area just to single-family lots. And I don't know that there'd be much concern, at least in Sycamore, about any question about losing any development potential in that regard. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay. So this is a discussion item only. So either of you like to start off? As President Mertz. As Member Goodman.
Did you want to go first?
After you.
Okay. So this is a much improved way of presenting the information and kind of getting where we want to go, I think, than the last time. So thank you very much. I have three general comments to make. The first one is, the question is, there's a choice before the council. One is to modify, so I have another one, too. One is whether to modify the land use code to remove development incentives that do not contribute to the vision for the city's growth. And I'm not, I don't know how we could ever say no to that, because why would we not, why would we have codes that are not consistent with our vision for the city's growth? So of course I say yes to that, because I think that answer's self-evident. And number, and then the second question there is, or do we want to consider those changes at a later time? This is a later time. We passed the Centralist Squawk Plan in 2012. This is 2019. Let's get going. The second comment I have is, I'm not exactly sure why we're focused on duplexes implying that they're going to create this dangerous density or this, I just don't see that we're going to get this, all of a sudden our Squawk and Sycamore are going to explode in, with duplexes. On one hand, duplexes are seen as maybe filling a need that we have, which is, you know, a little more affordable than other types of housing. So I think what's potentially could be better explained is why, why we want to curb the potential development of duplexes. And is that because we already have adequate codes that incentivize ADUs, for example, which are also less affordable? So I just think that could be, that could be much, it could be much better explained as to why we, you know, why duplexes are the focus here. My third comment is, are there other codes or concerns that are out there that we might want to modify that are inconsistent with the vision for the city's growth? We're just focused on this one, and this was, came as a result of concerns from Sycamore. And I think this just kind of mushroomed for two reasons. One, a different way to look at it, because the last one was a little confusing the last time it came forward. And number two, because it was potentially not just an issue of Sycamore when you're looking at development elsewhere, that's, that potential development that's inconsistent with the city's growth. So my question is, what other, what other things are we missing potentially, just because we're only focused on duplexes right now, duplex codes?
So those are super great questions. I guess what I would say initially in response is, for me, the duplexes, I don't think are really the issue. Because this conversation pivoted to what about quantity and not particular housing type? The one tool that I think is, so Trish called it incentive, it, you know, it is a way, the clustered housing provision was put into place to basically allow for a property owner or a developer to maximize the density on their property as they developed, right? And it allowed you to move some of the units out of the, out of the critical areas and put them on smaller lots. And, you know, if the council was, back to those questions that were posed in the memo, if the council really wants to remove the incentives that exist for people maximizing the residential units outside of Central, I think, I think focusing on the cluster provision seems like the one that might be more germane to this conversation than the duplexes. So just, now, the point, the point is, we've got, they're a little bit hinged right now in code, so you can do duplexes if you do, if you do, under the cluster provision, correct?
Correct.
And so maybe what we need to think about is, because on the diagrams that Trish provided earlier, you know, the second diagram, which was the middle one, where there were duplexes, but all the, you know, the joined lots were still basically about the same, you know, that's a different outcome than if you really only have, you know, one acre of buildable property and you're trying to push nine units onto that one acre. That's a much different outcome than if the entire two acres is buildable. So, so I don't know, I hope, hopefully that was semi-clear, because you're looking confused, Councilmember. So if, if, if we remove the cluster provision, and we would need to think about how that plays out, so if you could still do duplexes, but they would be, so let's assume the minimum lot size is 9,600. We'll stick with single-family south, right?
Yeah. So can I just stop you? So I guess my message is, if we're trying to revise codes to make our, to make us consistent with our vision, growth vision in Central, so that what we do outside Central is not inconsistent, then, I don't know whether it's cluster or duplexes or what, but the answer's yes. So I'm still confused by the cluster duplex, what you can, what you can't, what, I don't need to understand that tonight. I would send you all, my preference would be to send you all back to figure out, to come, my answer about, is yes. You figure out what that yes looks like and then come back to me. I can't tell you specifically what that is. I am concerned that we're not capturing all of the changes that we need to make, because we're a little bit too focused on, it looks to me like we're a little bit too focused on one thing, because it came out of Sycamore and it was duplexes or cluster or something. I don't know. So that's what I have to say about that. And then the other thought that I have is, I think you answered it already. I thought we were going to, either I misread or something, but I'm hearing that this goes back to the, this goes back to the full council, well, answer the, maybe answer that. I would be concerned if this was direction, sort of, to the administration to create Agenda Bill when it's only three council members. This is feedback, and I would think that this needs to have more input from the full council before we actually, for sure, created an Agenda Bill, because you've only got three here.
Right. So let me ask Trish, because I lost track of the bouncing ball. The AB that we were here last month on, is that one currently suspended?
Correct.
Okay. So there's no pending AB at the moment. So I think the question for this committee is, we can either schedule something at a workshop, or we can come back and have one more conversation at this committee, because it seemed like there's been some ideas shared in terms of maybe what we should go back and look at. And I think we, as we heard some of the comments tonight, I think we might want to do that. We could come back one more time. I don't know that we have time sensitivity, that another month might not be a bad stop to come back here if we're going, if we're going to have another land and shore meeting.
Okay. Well, that's all I have, and based, I might have something else to say about process and coming back, based on what my fellow committee members say. Thank you.
Council President Mertz.
So I have 1.75 acres. And it turns out, the neighbor on one side has seven tenths of an acre. So I could buy their property and do something like this. The neighbor on the other side has 2.02 acres. They can just do it without anybody.
Yes.
That would, that would not be fitting with what we're trying to do with the city, which is locate density around services, right? Upper Squawk Mountain, it's 2.5 miles to the nearest grocery store, for me. I don't have a Safeway, I don't have a sip restaurant, I don't have any parking rides.
I do.
You do. You do. And I admire that every day. And Tracy and I, you know, we're going to be empty nesters in a couple of months. Anyhow, so it's just, it's not in keeping with what we're trying to do as a city. So I personally would like us to consider removing duplexes and clustered housing as options in single-family suburban. I think ADUs are great. I think ADUs are, we as a city took a good response to addressing housing, but putting clusters up in areas where there's no services to support them is not, is not taking the city in the direction that we've said we want to go. Thanks.
Okay. I agree with Councilmember Goodman that this presentation of the information is much clearer. And thank you very much for the drawing of the cluster, the three. That was very helpful for me. And also the critical areas, the answer to that, and that critical areas are, and those buffers are not affected by whichever decision we make, was also a good clarification for me. So thank you for that improvement. I also wanted to recognize that even though the Agenda Bill that was previously before us has now been suspended, and now we're potentially going a different way, we did receive a lot of public input on that, on that Agenda Bill, because of all the letters that were sent out and all the responses. And I just wanted to recognize that, because whatever we do going forward, I think that those responses are important for us to keep in mind. And a lot of people did take the time to write or correspond with staff and, or come to our meetings and give their comments on this. And my reading of those comments is that, for the most part, they were supportive of the changes and were sometimes surprised about, about this basically being a possibility. So I think generally, generally, people were supportive of this change, because it is in keeping with their understanding of their neighborhood. And then I have a comment on the options that are presented in the memo. So I understand that we are, we are moving towards going, you know, this is, this is more ambiguous, or it's, it's less than an AB in terms of allowing us to explore options more, which I think, I think is a good direction. But I also think that these questions, the options that are before us are very leading. As Councilmember Goodman said, the first one is to modify the land use code to remove development incentives that do not contribute to the vision for the city's growth. And so, of course, we want to do that, but I think the question is, you know, what are the options that are ideas of how we might get there? And so we might have a better conversation with options that are a bit, a bit more refined, I think. And then also, I don't, I don't know that they are incentives. I think that they're things that are allowed, but just the wording there was, I think, not, not how I saw it. And also, I think having options that are a bit more specific and a bit more actionable would be helpful in the future, recognizing that we are moving towards having these discussions, sort of informational items, earlier in the process to understand council's interest in an item or interest in a certain action. So I recognize that this is a bit different than a AB, but I also think having some more options that are actionable would be helpful. And then I also wanted to agree with Councilmember Goodman on the, on the duplex. I don't, I don't know that duplex is really something that I feel changes neighborhood character necessarily. I think the issue is really around the clustering. And so that's, that's, in my mind, the bigger concern. And then currently, you can only do the duplexes with that clustering provision. So just to understand that better, I think, would be helpful. But I don't, I don't know that duplex, if you, if you, for example, had a two-acre parcel and you have one house on that, versus you have a two-acre parcel and you have one duplex, I don't see the, I don't see that that would make much of a difference, but it's, it's more of the situation where you have a cluster of duplexes, where you have a lot of critical areas on your two-acre parcel, and then you have a cluster of a bunch of nine duplexes on your two acres, something like that, that might be more of the concern. So just understanding what the code currently allows, what it doesn't allow, what are our options for how to change the code would be, I think, the next step in the conversation, or what I would like to understand better. And then I also think that the clustering with the critical areas, it doesn't, I think a lot of these areas, like Squawk, there's a lot of areas that are very steep. And so I think that, that critical areas component will, would probably come into play in a number of situations. So you would have that situation, like I just said, where you have a two acres, and then you have a bunch of it as critical areas. And so you have a bunch of the housing that's clustered under that provision in one part of your parcel. So I think that that's very relevant, and might be, in future conversations, helpful to understand how often that situation might come up if we're considering changing it.
Council President Mertz.
So you both brought up a point that I want to also plus what on, which is, you know, I said clusters and duplexes. You know, if we allow an ADU, then taking a, you know, 1.75 acre parcel and going from a single home to a duplex, I think is comparable to an ADU. And so I think if, if we say that ADUs are fine, then I, you know, as we move forward, I want to be clear that my concern is around the clustering. And as I, as I thought about my neighbors, I thought about, you know, nine families in a property that had one family previously. So I just want to reiterate that I think that's an important distinction as the council looks at options going forward.
I would also be interested in looking into those minimum parcel sizes and understanding that, and understanding how that affects the potential of these neighborhoods. So, okay. Have any more comments? Great. Then that was our final item of the evening. Do you have what you need from us as far as the discussion?
So I think the question for the committee is, if you would like this particular topic to come back in July, we can run some numbers, develop some scenarios, so we can talk about it more granularly. Kind of what I heard Councilmember Mertz start with was kind of a thought of getting, of being clear of just, let's get rid of duplexes and cluster. If we want to have one more conversation at committee first, I think staff can go back and provide some additional information that might help that conversation before this committee might decide, yeah, let's take it now back to full council. So I think we can go either direction. I think what we'd like is just a little bit more clarity from the committee.
Okay. As Member Goodman.
So this concern I have is coming back and forth to land and shore and getting feedback on an Agenda Bill that's only three people, concerns me a little bit, and that it doesn't get, it's not a, does that make sense? That all of a sudden it comes to the council and it's, so it would eventually get, go on consent after, so let's, what I'm hearing is that it would be, come back for information, for some more information.
So it would be a follow-up memo back to the committee for another discussion?
And then what? But then what?
Depending on where that goes. Let's assume that the committee has a certain shared perspective on what we want to do. I believe we would, so here's where I probably don't know, because the clerk's office will tell me probably I'm wrong. I would think we would start with a new AB. I don't know that we would unsuspend the existing AB and try and, unless, unless it landed where that first AB was, kind of proposing to start with, which I doubt. landed where that first AB was kind of proposing to start with, which I doubt. So my guess is, we're going to come at this from another direction, which would be a brand new AB.
Right. And I just, I want to make my concern clear. My, my concern is that staff or the administration, so the risk in, in getting feedback from a committee and then creating an agenda bill is that that somehow is interpreted as council's direction. We are three people.
Right.
Not four.
Right.
And so I don't know how, I don't know how we handle that unless, I don't know if I'm making myself clear.
You are.
And the administration can put forth any agenda bills it wants to.
Right.
With the understanding that this is just three people.
Right. And I think what we're doing is, we're kind of beta testing some different ideas with these three, this minority of the council, before we spend time putting together a full AB, which might not be kind of in keeping with where the council wants to go with this issue. We're, I think we're framing a conversation. And as we put different pieces of information in front of this committee, I think you guys are giving us some feedback, which is helpful. And it's helping us develop, I think, the, ultimately, the story we might want to come forward with. And, you know, as you have mentioned, there were a number of people that were paying attention to this issue going forward. And it would be nice if we've kind of baked it well enough so that it's then moving linearly and not bouncing around. And I think that, that's the hope that we would have, so.
And I like the new approach of bringing in things forward for discussion first, to get feedback. I like that. And I like the idea of this, you know, maybe being a perfect opportunity for committee chair to report out, you know, what we gave feedback on and what may be the next steps. And so council members who are interested in knowing that, what that conversation is can watch the meeting.
Right.
I just think that as we move into this new model, that the administration is, has been doing for the last year or so, and it seems to be more consistent now, I think that we just need to be cognizant of the fact that it's not direction, it's feedback to help you with an agenda bill that could eventually go down in flames. I don't know.
Yeah. Right.
Okay. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay.
So a follow-up procedural question. If this were to be a new AB, would it then possibly be on the consent agenda to be referred back to this committee? And so at that point, a council member could pull it down?
Maybe. I'm going to guess with you, based on my understanding of the trajectory, is, let's assume we have this conversation in July about this again. We then put together an AB. I believe that the hope is that we've transitioned away from committees either August or September. So it looks like by the time this might be baked enough, we might be out of the committee structure completely by that time, so.
Okay. Okay. Great. So now you have the direction or the information?
I think we do. So we're going to bring back, we're going to bring back some more information. And Dan reminded me that next month, this committee would meet on July 4th, and I think we aren't doing that. So July 10th, I think is, was the open date for the next land and shore meeting.
Okay. Well, great. Thank you. And so I will just announce that one more time. The next meeting of the Council Land and Shore Committee will be July 10th, 2019, here in council chambers at 6:30 PM. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.